Good evening colleagues and welcome to the Borough Council meeting, please be seated. This meeting of the Borough Council has been recorded and livestreamed. Welcome to those members of the public in the Public Gallery and those watching from home. Please afford me a few minutes to cover a number of housekeeping formalities. If any member of the public or press would like to record the proceedings themselves, please ensure this is done from the Public Gallery without causing any disturbance of today's meeting. If the fire alarm should sound, can those sitting in the Public Gallery exit through the doors behind them and those sitting on the chamber floor exit through the doors behind myself? And make your way to the front of the town hall which is the congregation point if there is a fire alarm. To limit disturbances, please ensure that all mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent during the meeting and that we have no interruptions or disruption from the chamber floor or the Public Gallery that makes today's business, sorry, that makes conducting today's business difficult. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. Please remember to turn the microphones on and to switch them off when not speaking and speak directly into the microphone. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by raising their hand and being invited to speak. All other councillors must remain silent whilst other members are speaking. Members are reminded that the code of conduct applies to this meeting and we should always demonstrate respectful and courteous behaviour to one another. We must all promote the practice of decent and civilised behaviour at Borough Council meetings. I have received apologies from the following councillor, councillor Foster. Are there any other members or officers aware of any further apologies?
Madam Mayor, councillor Foreman.
Thank you councillor Dixon. Councillor Robertson? Thank you councillor Robertson. The first item of business on today's, I'm sorry councillor.
Councillor Maxwell, Catherine Maxwell.
Catherine Maxwell is not going to be absent, she's going to be a bit late councillor and I had been made aware of that due to her work commitments. But thank you anyway. The first item of business is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make a declaration before we move on to the next item of business? Colleagues are reminded that if you have a disclosureary pecuniary interest in any item which prevents you from participating in the debate and any vote, you will need to leave the chamber during that item. Item two on today's agenda. The first business today is to elect the mayor for the new municipal year. Can I call now for nominations for the mayor for the Borough of South Tyneside? Councillor Lamont?
Madam Mayor, can I propose councillor John McCabe?
Thank you councillor Lamont. Is that seconded? Thank you. Before I invite any other member, does any other member wish to speak in respect of the nomination for councillor McCabe to be mayor of South Tyneside?
Madam Mayor, may I say a few words?
Councillor Lamont?
Thank you. John Gerard McCabe was born in 1955 and to the late Doreen and Jack McCabe. He was the eldest of seven children and lived almost all of his life in heaven. John is from a strong Irish heritage and was brought up in a strict Catholic family where hard work was the norm, but mum and dad still found time to instil in their children the value of helping others less fortunate than themselves. He helped dad volunteer with St Vincent de Paul and helped mum in her nursing capacity, tending the cuts and scrapes in the street to kids, cats, dogs and a menagerie of pets. John attended St Alwis's School in Heaven and at age six he was able to recite Latin responses at mass and became not a boy. At nine, John's ambition was to follow in the path of his uncle, Amaris Brother and the Teaching Order of Monks in Dumfries, Scotland, which dates way back to the days of the French Revolution. But John got homesick and returned home. He passed his eleven plus and entered St Joseph's Grammar School. Later on, when John left school, he returned to the Order of the Maris Brothers in Dumfries but got homesick again and returned to St Joseph's to complete his A levels and read at Street University. But John then secured employment and began earning good wages at the First Jurassic Limited and Piratenecks which put him on a different path. But not for long.
Excuse me councillor Lamont, please can we limit disturbance in the Public Gallery when a councillor is speaking please because it's very difficult to hear? Thank you councillor Lamont.
So John secured employment and began earning good wages at the First Jurassic Limited and the Pyro which put him on a different path. But not for long, John's mum had other ideas and she steered him towards the police force, serving three and a half years in Durham. I hasten to add that's Durham Constabulary and not HMP. And he left with an exemplary conduct certificate. In 1978, John found himself drawn into mining, following the path of his many relatives, and started at the bottom of the ladder at West Oak Colliery. His potential was soon recognised and he completed his studies to become a qualified mining engineer. In 1986, John suffered life-threatening crush injuries while underground, but despite being given his last rites, John showed tremendous resilience and determination and recovered sufficiently to return to work after 12 months. John went on to manage monthly million pound budgets, ensuring material quality and control, key essentials to the continuous production of saleable coal. In recognition of the value of John's work, he was sought after to work with British Coal Research, visiting collieries throughout the UK and in a professional advisory role. John returned to Westo to take up an engineering training role, but sadly the pit was earmarked for closure under the Tories. He was then sent to Macquarie and MacColliery to be a safety manager following a fatal accident. John encountered much resistance, but he managed to get the men and managers on side, improving health and safety and safe working practices. John left mining behind in 1994 to set up his successful taxi business, which he sold in 2010, but he still works as a private hire Hackney driver which keeps him in touch with the people he represents. John has served many posts since his election in 2003 here. These include Chair of Overtimely Scrutiny, Chair of Regional Overtimely Scrutiny, Chief Whip for 13 years to this Labour goal, political officer for Jarro CLP for many years and Chair of People Select Committee and was the driver for the Poverty Truth Commission work. John has achieved much in his life and some of his greatest achievements include securing £24 million to build St Joseph's School in Heaven, becoming a former president of the North of England Mining and Mechanical Engineers Council, where he is still a current member, achieving professional membership of the Institute of Mining and Materials. In the role of mayor, John will fulfil the duties required of him with honour, pride and integrity, proudly representing the borough at civic and ceremonial events, hosting dignitaries and will be an exemplary ambassador for South Tyneside. He will uphold the council's values and standards of behaviour behind the proud principles. His firm but fair disposition will serve him well and will command professional conduct and respect in the council chamber, ensuring adherence to the constitution, compliance in decision-making and promotion of the debate-not-hate ethos. He brings to the role knowledge and resilience, not afraid to challenge or to take on board advice. He brings empathy and understanding and cares a great deal for the welfare of the people of this borough, clearly demonstrated by the passion and commitment to the Poverty Truth Commission as Chair of People Select. I've known John in a personal capacity for over 45 years. I've always found him to be honest, hardworking, caring and compassionate, an oracle of knowledge and a stickler for the rules with a great work ethic and always gives a hundred per cent, anything else just wouldn't do. I would therefore ask my colleagues to support me in proposing councillor John Gerard McCabe as your next mayor of South Tyneside.
And thank you councillor Lamont, does any other member wish to speak?
Councillor Porthaus?
Thank you madam mayor. I'll be a little bit more brief than that. Yeah, I've known councillor McCabe for over 50 years and if you could win two, we'd have heaven, South Tyneside, you know. I think John will be a wonderful mayor and will be well supported by his lovely wife Julie. John, like me, knows and appreciates what an honour and privilege it is to represent our wonderful borough. John will be a fantastic ambassador while carrying out his mayoral duties, a second councillor McCabe's nomination.
Thank you councillor Porthaus. Does any other member wish to speak?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to say a few words for John. I've known John since 16-year-old, since we worked at West Oak Colliery. Me and John, our career paths have been similar areas in life. We're both trained to be priests, we're both miners, we're both in the SVP and I think I'm the only man in this room to make breakfast, bring breakfast for him on a morning when we were away. But with John becoming mayor, John's part of the Zulu Group, which is a West Oak Miners Heritage Group and part of the miners which are here today. And today we've actually, we're promoting them actually because today we've made him mayor of the Zulus, so he's, this is his new title. And I think he'll do a fantastic job for the borough. He's got a fantastic mayoress and I wish them well and thank you very much, thanks.
Thank you councillor Gibson, I thought you were all going to make us dance there when you produced that. Are there any other nominations for mayor, councillor Robertson? Oh sorry, I didn't see your hand before councillor Robertson. Thank you very much councillor Robertson. Are there any other nominations for the role of mayor of South Tyneside? Is the motion agreed? Thank you colleagues. Can I ask councillor John McCabe to come forward to make his declaration of acceptance of office?
I, John Gerard McCabe, having been elected to the office of mayor of South Tyneside Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. Sorry about that colleagues, it doesn't take as long as that normally to get ready. I'm just going to say a few words on my appointment as mayor. Can I first of all thank my colleague councillor Angela Mont for her very kind words and also to councillor Richie Portous for his very kind words and a good moral of mine, Ernest Gibson. And I see some of the lads in the, in the Public Gallery and thanks for coming. And thank you very much for your support for me. My antecedent history is the fact that the driving force in my life is to help people. My mother was a district nursing sister for over 40 years in the heaven area, in the Jallow area. And my father was in the St Vincent de Paul. And both of them would be very proud of you. But they're in heaven and so therefore will continue. But my sisters, my brothers, we're all brought up with the same ethic, work ethic, that you're there to help people. And that's my overriding job in South Tyneside is to help the residents and the communities get better. And I look forward to the challenges that we have, many challenges in today's society. The final thing I'd like to say is that an overriding thing for me is the eradication of poverty. That's the number one, especially in today's climate. And I don't have to tell experienced colleagues about how they are suffering. We all get in case work every day in regard to that, about how people are suffering. So let's make it a better world. I can't do that as an individual, but together as a team. And that's everybody politically, working together. Let's improve for our residents and our communities. So there we are. Can I now call on councillor Bell? Do you want to move a vote of thanks to councillor Pate please?
Thank you Mr Mayor. And first of all, may I congratulate you on your appointment as mayor for the next year. I hope you have a very successful and an enjoyable year.
It gives me great pleasure to give this vote of thanks to our outgoing mayor councillor Pate. I've known Pat for many, many years now, long before she ever became a councillor. She has always been heavily involved in the voluntary sector and has always given 110% to everything she sets her mind to. Her duties of mayor of this borough over the last two years are testament to that. Along with her very able and equally committed mayoress, Mrs Jean Copp, Pat has carried out hundreds of events, visits, ceremonial duties and hosting local, regional and national groups and individuals at the town hall. She has supported nationally recognised events like ANZAC Day, Workers Memorial Day, Remembrance Day, Armed Forces Day, the Diwali Festival of Light and Kathina Day Celebration of Buddha. Local groups like the Donny Mixtures Fundraising Group, Beads Helping Hands, Aply at Home, Charlie and Carter Foundation, Chloe and Liam Together, Hebbin and South Shields Football Clubs and 343 Squadron, to name just a fraction of those who Pat has welcomed into the town hall and visited at their locations. The Halloween tours and events here will never be forgotten. Pat and Jean have attended hundreds of local events, the Winter Parade and the Summer Festival among some of the best. They've also attended Hebbin Festival, Jarro Festival and Harton Village Day. They also helped celebrate the donation of three guide dog puppies to homes in the borough to start their training as future guide dogs for the blind. Pat has presided over two remarkable civic boards, bringing together dignitaries from across the region and forging strong links with the other local authority mayors and mayoresses, attending their events and helping to fundraise for their chosen charities as well as their own. Pat's raised a substantial amount of money for the two main charities, Cancer Connections and the Customs House, along with donations to smaller charities and organisations across the borough. As well of all of this, there have been several royal events over these last two years that Pat has presided over. The attendance at the Queen's Garden Party and celebrating the Queen's Jubilee have been two of the most memorable highlights. Unfortunately, there were also events that were more somber. The proclamation of the death of Queen Elizabeth II, followed by the proclamation of the coronation of King Charles III. Through it all, Pat has risen to the challenge of the throne. Through it all, Pat has risen to the challenge every time, even though it's been a whirlwind, tiring two years. Always cheerful, always ready with a kind word or a helping hand, which I know only too well from personal experience. Pat, thank you just doesn't seem enough for all you and Jean have done for the borough and for its residents. It's time now to take some time for yourself and reflect on all that you've done and achieved before the day job kicks in yet again. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much for those kind words councillor Bell. Is there any other colleague or any other councillor in here would like to add to that vote of thanks please? Nick, councillor Carter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Congratulations as well on your appointment. It gives me great pleasure to second the vote of thanks to Pat and would like to concur with the comments already been made by councillor Bell. I congratulate you Pat on your successful mayoral two years. During the first year, we were very much in the throes of the pandemic, which had a challenge and severely curtailed many of the faced events. But you have more than made up for that by the number of events and visits you have made, along with your mayoress, Mrs Jean Cop. I would also like to endorse the thanks paid to Jean for her hard work and supporting and accompanying the mayor, not just during civic events, but throughout the last two years. Pat, you've gone above and beyond what is required of your role and your commitment and dedication has been exemplary. As councillor Bell has already mentioned, you've achieved so much during these two years with just about every type of fundraising event you could possibly imagine. You've been successful in raising huge amounts of money for your two charities, which have made an enormous difference to them. Being mayor requires great, great commitment and Pat has certainly given that commitment to the mayoriality and has been an ambassador for the borough. It is with great pleasure that I congratulate and thank Pat for her dedicated work over the last two years, for which she should be very proud. I endorse the vote of thanks.
Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just like to echo the, the comments that we've already heard, but also just to say in connection with your own acceptance speech, you talked about your priority being to help people. And I think all of us here share that. Along with that, I think goes celebrating South Tyneside and its, and its people. And I think councillor Hayes done, you know, an outstanding job of, of that part of the role in particular and worked tirelessly in terms of attending engagements and engaging with, oops, community groups and community events. And, you know, I know that's taken a huge amount of time and effort and we've had conversations about having to answer emails in the middle of the night because that's, that's the only time you can find to do it. So, you know, really appreciate all the time and effort that's gone in. And of course, the unenviable role of, of sitting in this chair and trying to manage the meetings smoothly. And, you know, that's, that's not something I would, I would wish on anyone. But with that said, wishing you all the best for the, for the year ahead.
Thanks very much. Councillor Robertson?
Yeah, I'd like to personally thank councillor here. We cross-sawed once or twice, but we never fell out and we spoke outside the chamber as well. So thanks very much, Pat.
Any other colleague? I'm sure that everybody would like to get up and, and say kind words about you because you have worked exceedingly hard. But there's no doubt about that. Can I call on you now to respond to the, the people who have voted thanks to you, please?
First of all, Mr Mayor, may I congratulate you on taking over as mayor of South Tyneside for the next year. And thank you all for the very kind words from across the chamber. I was asked in an interview quite recently to sum up in one word how I felt about being mayor for two years. And the word that sprung to mind straight away was historic. It has been historic and the mayoress and I have been privileged to go down in history for that reason. When we took over our roles, we were at the height of the Covid pandemic. We thought that it was going to be quiet, how wrong we were. We set out to visit all the key workers and the frontline workers. Those people that had kept us safe and supported us during this dreadful time. We met so many heroes who we will all be forever grateful to. We opened up our town halls for guided tours. The mayoress and I learnt the history of Jarro Town Hall and South Shields Town Hall and welcomed many people to visit and learn about these historic working buildings. Our civic buildings we should be proud of as they form part of our heritage of this borough. In the first few months, we had five royal visitors to the borough. We welcomed Princess Anne, the Duchess of Wessex, the Duke of Gloucester. Then Princess Anne came back and then we had Prince Charles, now King Charles III, came to visit South Tyneside. It was my great pleasure and honour alongside the Lord Lieutenant to escort the royals around our wonderful borough. All of them came and showed genuine interest in what South Tyneside had to offer. We celebrated the late Queen's Platinum Jubilee in great style with the lighting of the beacon at the low top. Sadly, a few months later, our Queen passed away. As is custom around the country, a proclamation is read out by high sheriffs. I had to go to Newcastle to hear the High Sheriff of Tyne and Wear read out the proclamation and bring it back to South Tyneside so I could read it out on the steps of this very town hall. This caused great concern because on the same day it was Great North Run Day. There was talk of me going, coming back by helicopter or by speedboat. But South Tyne, Northern Brier Police stepped in and they got me a four by four rapid response car and I was brought back under blue light. And I have to say, that's the only time I've been brought anywhere in a blue light. I got to South Shields in a record time of nine minutes. This journey I will never forget. Me sitting in the back of this car with my mayoral regalia on trying to learn the wording of the proclamation. As some of it is written in Old English and it has to be read out accordingly. We have visited many places in our civic roles, locally, regionally and nationally. As has been said, we went to Buckingham Palace to the garden party and represented South Tyneside as your mayor and mayoress. One visit that is memorable is a visit to Manchester. I was invited by the High Commissioner of Bangladesh to go along for an evening. When we got there, I discovered that no other mayor from the country was present and then I was the guest of honour. I gave an address to over three hundred people present. I spoke about the wonderful diverse communities we have here in South Tyneside. And how we as a council work closely with them to promote inclusivity. The mayoress and I have visited many nurseries and schools in our borough. On one such visit, the nursery children had made me gifts. A little girl took great pleasure in placing a crown on my head. And I can still hear the mayoress saying, the little girl's crown's beautiful. But the glue wasn't dry on the crown. So it ran down my hair, down my neck and down my back. And the mayoress was saying, it's all right, the glue dries clear, you'll be fine. We've, we have encouraged schools to use the council chamber for their school council meetings. And have welcomed many schools into the chamber to do that. We have worked closely with the Young People's Parliament and attended many seminars, promoting with them democracy. We have in the past two years unveiled numerous blue plaques around the borough in recognition of the people who have contributed to our wonderful borough in so many ways. I also had the privilege of bestowing the freedom of the borough to, on Mr Ray Spencer MBE and to all, all, sorry, and also to the front key line workers who worked selflessly throughout the pandemic. We held the High Sheriff's inauguration right here in this chamber. Dame Irene Lucas became High Sheriff of Tyne and Wear a few months ago. Our summer festivals and parade was magnificent, as always is. We know how to do things in South Tyneside and thousands of people come from far and wide, year in, year out to attend. We have done so much over the past two years, too much to mention here today. But I will say this. We live in a wonderful place that we should be very, very proud of. We have carried out our roles with much pride and enthusiasm and showcased South Tyneside wherever we have gone. We have carried out over eighteen hundred engagements over the past two years and it has been an honour to do so for the mayoress and I. I would like to pay tribute to the late councillor Joe Amor. Joe was appointed my deputy mayor, but after a short while he had to give up his duties due to ill health. Since then, he has sadly passed away. To my deputy mayoress who supported councillor Amor, Mrs Lynne Blair. Thank you Lynne, you have supported us throughout our term of office in so many different ways. We did not have deputy mayor and mayoresses for eighteen months until a few months ago. When councillor Richie Portous was appointed deputy mayor and councillor Margaret Peacock was appointed deputy mayoress. I would like to place on my, on record my thanks to both of you who have helped us so much with our civic roles. I didn't realise I was going to be as nervous doing this. I would like to thank the good people of South Tyneside who have supported us in everything that we have done. Our businesses, our partner organisations, who have donated to my fundraising efforts for the mayor's charity. To elected members from all political parties who I have to say made council meetings challenging and memorable at times. But have also supported me donating raffle prizes and also giving money to my mayoress's charity. Thank you all so much. Elected members and council staff who have run marathons, some, some even did the three peak challenge to raise funds for my charity. I thank you all. To the cadets of Three Four, Three Two Four Squadron who have, who have escorted me on lots of civic occasions. Sky Marie Hannah Green, Sergeant Wiltzkowski, and I've pronounced that wrong. And last but no means least, Adam Pippett. You all did the squadron proud, always immaculately turned out in your uniforms and you were polite to everyone you came into contact with. My thanks to you all. Our staff here at South Tyneside Council who have supported me the past two years. Our officers, the legal team, our communications and press teams, democratic services and our member support, not forgetting our wonderful porters. Our events team, thank you all so much for everything you have done to support the mayoress and I in the past two years. My civic team, who I like to call the A Team. Well, what can I say? You know your job and you do it to such a high standard. You have kept me right and ensured I got to all engagements on time. Your attention to detail is second to none. Thank you each and every one of you. Last but no means least, my mayoress. My long-term friend of nearly forty years, Mrs Jean Cop. You have carried out your duties diligently with enormous pride. I cannot thank you enough, my friend. As I know at times it has been difficult because Jean still works full-time. On a more personal note, on behalf of the mayoress and I, I would like to take this opportunity to thank our long-suffering husbands and our families. As we have not seen much of them these past two years, as some days we've done ten and twelve hours going back to back from one public engagement to another. Thank you to both families for the love and support you have shown us. I apologise now if I've missed anyone out in my vote of thanks. But we truly appreciate what everyone has done to support us. We have so many historic memories to treasure that you have, sorry, thank you for bestowing the honour upon us of being your mayor and mayoress of South Tyneside. We set out to raise the profile of South Tyneside and I hope we have just done that. Good luck, Mr Mayor, alongside your mayoress as you set out on what I hope will be a memorable year in office. I hope that elected members from all political parties and the good people of South Tyneside give you the support they have given to me the past two years. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Well done there councillor Patey and well said. Thank you very much. Now going to move on to item four. To appoint the deputy mayor for the municipal year of two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I now have nominations for the appointment of deputy mayor? Councillor Dean? Propose. Councillor Peacock, okay. Do you want to move? Do you want to, are you saying anything, no?
Right, it's with great, well, first of all, congratulations on your appointment. It's with great pleasure that I'm proposing my fellow beadward councillor to be the new deputy mayor for, for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. I've known Margaret for many years and she has been the most capable councillor for eleven years now. And I have worked alongside Margaret for the last five years as Labour councillors for the beadward. Margaret has held many important positions in a number of committees, including chairing the Jarro and Bolton Cap meetings. Margaret has been an excellent champion representing her constituents. And during Covid, she was a volunteer helping the elderly and vulnerable constituents within our borough. She also, along with myself, have been championing our local Beads Helping Hands food bank. And she is also a governor for one of our schools in the beadward. It is fitting that Margaret should be chosen as the new deputy mayor as along with councillor Portous, when they both had to take on the ceremonial duties of the then deputy mayor Joe Amor, who was seriously ill and who sadly recently passed away. They've both done a sterling job and so I'm confident that Margaret Peacock will be a credit to the council in this deputy mayor, mayororal role. Along with the mayoress Gladys Hobson, who has been a big miss from the chamber and we welcome Gladys back to the chamber too. Thank you.
Is that motion seconded? Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I first of all congratulate you? Absolutely confident that you will have a very, very successful year, John. I'm really, really happy to have been asked by Margaret, by councillor Peacock to second the nomination of Margaret for the deputy mayor. It was my pleasure to work as a councillor in the beadward with Margaret. She was absolutely amazing. Our energy, our commitment, and just, she loves, as you said yourself. said yourself, she loves to help people, and that will stand her in really good stead when she supports you, hopefully as deputy mayor. She will be ably accompanied by Gladys Hobson, and I am really confident that if Margaret is deputy mayor today, that with Gladys, there will be an absolute support to you and your mayoress for the forthcoming municipal year. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Are there any other nominations? Okay, is the motion agreed? Can I ask councillor Peacock to step forward and make her declaration of acceptance of
I, Margaret Mary Peacock, having been elected to the office of deputy mayor of South Tyneside Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability.
I would like now to invite my guests and those of the deputy mayor to make their way to the reception room, where we will join them after we conclude our council business. Okay, the next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the ninth of March, and the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of council held on the ninth of March. Are they accepted as a true record? The next business is the mayor's communications. Colleagues, it's with great sadness that we must acknowledge the death of councillor Amor. Councillor Amor died on Sunday, the ninth of April, after a period of ill health. Councillor Amor served the Biddecombe All Saints Ward and South Shields since May two thousand and fifteen, when he was first elected to South Tyneside Council, and councillor Amor was appointed as deputy mayor of South Tyneside in May two thousand and twenty-one. Our sincere condolences have been conveyed to the family. Former councillor Maisy Stewart has also sadly passed. Maisy was first elected to South Tyneside Council in nineteen eighty-six, and served as councillor for the Beadward until two thousand and eleven. He was deputy mayor in nineteen ninety-four to ninety-five, and became mayor in ninety-five, and served until nineteen ninety-six. And finally, we must acknowledge the sad death of former councillor Marshall Granger. Marshall was first elected as a councillor for Cleedon and East Boldon nineteen ninety-six, serving until two thousand and four. And could I please ask members now to stand if you are able, and join me in a minute's silence, please? I'd like to thank former councillors Atkinson, Flynn, Duncan, and Heatherington for their contributions to the work of the council during their time as council members, and to wish them the very best in the future. Can I take this opportunity also to welcome to the council councillors Cunningham, Ford, Millen, Smith, and Yeh. I look forward to working with you all. The next item of business is to consider a report of the chief executive and the director of governance and corporate affairs to review and update the constitution. I will ask councillor Dixon, leader of the council, to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, congratulations on becoming mayor of our fantastic borough, and I hope you and your mayoress Julie have a wonderful year. Colleagues, this report sends our annual review and proposed updates to the constitution for the municipal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. We know the importance of good and effective governance, and as the LGA Corporate Peer Progress Review told us towards the end of last year, we've made significant and concerted efforts to continue to improve the council's governance arrangements, including improving the constitution. This diligence and focus is paying off, and there is a determination to maintain this focus. To that end, the Constitution Committee, a politically balanced committee, working with the council's monitoring officer, embarked upon another detailed review. We met regularly over the course of the past year to share views, consider comments, and feedback received from members, officers, and members of the public, and have worked through opportunities to further develop and to improve the constitutional arrangements for the council. I hope you agree, colleagues, that this is evident from the detail within the report for your consideration today, and for ease, all of the recommendations are set out in full between paragraphs fifteen and ninety-eight of the report. I would like to pull out a number of key recommendations, but first, after a period of reflection, I would like to draw your attention to the recommendation considered within the report that I will not be moving today. I am not moving the proposal in paragraph forty-three to reduce the number of community area forums to four. I've previously stressed the importance of engaging and listening, seeking to understand is one of our proud values. It is no secret that some of you have expressed concerns about the suggested reduction. I am also very mindful that the local government boundary commission is reviewing the electoral and boundary arrangements of councils to make sure that they are fair, and this includes the electoral review of South Tyneside. The review is to make sure our councils represent about the same number of electors, and that ward arrangements help the council work effectively. Whilst the local government boundary commission has decided that the number of councillors in South Tyneside should be fifty-four, the same as now, the consultation is still ongoing, and once completed, I believe the insight will be beneficial to our thinking around community area forums. Also, another recommendation that relates to our CAFs are moved, including the strengthening of the terms of reference, the improvements of the operating procedures, and the recommendation that a minimum of fifty per cent of all CAF meetings will be held in the evening. However, I will not move that the evening meeting must commence at six p.m., and instead suggest that we allow the chair of each CAF some discretion and flexibility over the start time of evening meetings. The recommendations that I move today include referencing our twenty-year vision for South Tyneside to be a place where people live healthy, happy, and fulfilled lives, with our constitution, and includes embedding our council ambitions that we want to achieve to deliver our vision within the constitution, and to update our policy framework. Recommendations to strengthen the articles of the constitution, particularly around planning, human resources committee, and standards committee are included. It is recommended that part C of the constitution, that sets out which parts of the council are responsible for carrying out particular functions, is brought up to date, and our rules of procedure are also modernised specifically around extraordinary meetings of Borough Council and our procurement procedure rules. Codes and protocols have been developed significantly over recent years, all with the aim of providing greater support and information to elected members, and whilst this is still an ongoing process, a number of specific recommendations are made to bolster our planning protocols and update the information contained within our protocols with Northumbria Police. The Constitution Committee is the guardian of the council's constitution, and whilst members of the committee may not always agree, we all take this responsibility very seriously. It's having been through a robust and systematic exercise over many months, and, Mr Mayor, I present this report to you today. Colleagues, I would urge you to agree to the changes moved and proposed, and that you approve the updated constitution as provided for at dependencies one. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that motion seconded?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to second that report and also the amendments that the leader pronounced in those report, that report, thank you.
And what's your point of order, councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, this discussion now is going to be about the constitution.
What is your point of order?
I'm going to hand it over to him. So this is about the constitution, and it's going to be amended if these are accepted or refused and what have you. I need to confirm some points within the constitution, as it's going to reprint now. If I can talk about the points of order in the constitution, please?
I'm just going to take some legal advice here.
Yeah, because it's confirmation, there's no point the constitution getting printed if there's queries that's going to cost, going to get it reprinted again.
Quite, I quite agree with you. I'm there, as the mayor, I have to be legally correct, so I've just taken some legal advice, but I'll share the point of order with yourself. What's the point of order you're trying to make? Because it's about something that's happened now.
Yep.
What's not been followed?
The point of order I'm trying to make, if we're, I've given you copies of what I've got in front of us, exact same copies, I'm going to refer to the constitution, it's going to be reprinted after tonight's meeting, and there's discrepancies that we need to talk about at this full council now. It's a point of order on the constitution. This, this subject now, what we're dealing with, right? The exact wording is, yep, to consider a report of the director of governance and corporate affairs to review and update the constitution, yous can tell us to sit down and I'll sit down respectfully, but in a week's time, when I give the Montenobbs a visa, I should have been allowed to do one, yeah, video tonight, is I going to have to pay and waste taxpayers' money to do a new constitution?
Okay, well, I don't consider that you've raised a point of order as defined in the procedure rule, it's the procedure rule twelve twelve, and therefore I cannot let you proceed.
Understand, and with respect, it's going to be a week to taxpayers' money that is I going to do.
Okay. That's right, that's right. Okay, any other member wish to ask a question or may, councillor, Francis are going to get you, councillor Thompson on his hand up first?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and congratulations. I think first of all, I'd like to thank all the officers, all the members for the considerable work done on the review of the constitution over the last several months. It needs to be said, the Constitution Committee that made these recommendations in front of us today consists of seven Labour group members, two opposition members. Majority decision is required for a recommendation coming to full council for decision, as the recommendations in this report are today. Overall, there have been, there's been an awful lot of good work cross-party during the lengthy review of the constitution, both this year and last, and many of today's recommendations had unanimous agreement. Unfortunately, some recommendations were not supported by the opposition. Members on that, on that committee, for example, did not support the decision not to bolster the independence of the standards committee. It was very difficult to understand the majority support in Constitution Committee to not guarantee independence to the successful, independently chaired standards committee by not recommending the appointment of the independent Labour member on standards committee to be the vice chair of that committee. The independence of that, of the standards committee could have been ensured by this, in my opinion. Deciding against this was a very poor decision, but majority rules, and this is reluctantly accepted. But by a country mile, the biggest concern from the Constitution Committee recommendations this year was the proposal to restructure the community area forums across the whole borough. What on earth's happened? The opposition fought against this CAF restructuring proposal right from the offset, while it was being rammed through Constitution Committee. Yet now, at the last minute, only just now, this proposal has been pulled by the Labour Group itself. Good, but I have to ask, how on earth can the Labour Group override a Constitutional, a Constitution Committee decision? I'll accept that this may be legal and constitutional for now, but how on earth does the Labour Group, Labour Group unilaterally, at the last minute, override a committee decision? But that's for another day. Supposedly, this CAF restructure proposal was to make a saving of six thousand pounds. We all know in here, every last one of us knows the real reason for that proposal, and that was because the Labour Group had lost control in the Riverside CAF, and this was a way to regain that control. But that aside, how does the Labour Group explain trying to save six thousand, then running up the cost of restructuring the CAFs, tapping into our resources? God knows.
Councillor Thompson? Councillor Thompson? I'm allowing you to continue to speak, but you've obviously got an essay there, and, you know, you know.
The essay is all.
Other members wish to speak, could you make your point, please, and then we'll make progress, thanks.
So my last point was, God knows how much this proposal has cost to date. We went into this proposal from the Labour Group, no due diligence, due diligence that would have covered the very boundary considerations that have been mentioned by councillor Dixon, no data, no supporting evidence, blindly pushed through at the last minute, that's significant. blindly pushed through at the last minute at significant cost. Complete chaos with, I'm sure, a very significant cost. The only saving grace here is that the CAF restructuring is now not going ahead. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay, thanks for that, councillor Thompson. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and thanks to those involved in in the preparation of this. Obviously, you appreciate it's an essential but very time consuming task to pull all of this together. And I understand it's not necessary to make a declaration of interest with regard to this, but I'm just gonna say contained in here are some recommendations with regard to the both the basic allowance and special responsibility allowances increasing. And so worth noting that members here, if this is agreed, stand to benefit financially. And I welcome various aspects of the report and the proposals, including the the annual report on motions that have been received in the previous year. I think that's good in terms of keeping members of the public updated on what's been done. The proposal to reduce some of the SRAs, the special responsibility allowances, is positive in my eyes. That's a saving. That's important in terms of the public perception, how we use our funds and money. I'm very pleased to see that that proposal regarding the CAF restructure has been withdrawn. I think that's good for local democracy and it's good in terms of public perception of what we do in the council. Unfortunately, there's a few things that I would find difficult to support in here in full. I'm sad to see that the cap on the number of motions remains despite the fact that we have the existence of the the guillotine, which is the time limit and and the fact that that's never had to be used. To me indicates that we're seeking to solve a problem that simply doesn't exist. And I note, as I mentioned, that there's embedded in the updated constitution a four point zero four increase to both the basic allowance and the special responsibility allowances. And I think some members of the public would find that questionable at a time when, you know, people are struggling to put food in their bellies and and keep the radiators on. And finally, in terms of motions to council, page hundred and sixty eight of the revised constitution, section ten point three point seven, it's the, it's for the proposer of a motion to take reasonable efforts to satisfy themselves that their motion is within scope prior to giving notice. And it goes on to say, a short summary of the reasonable efforts should be included when a notice of motion is made. Now, in my view, a motion is either in scope or it isn't. And if it's not in scope, it never ends up on the agenda in the first place. So this seems to be to introducing additional work and arguably an additional barrier when there's already a system in place. And again, that's seeking to fix a problem that simply doesn't exist. In summary, I think there's some really positive work and I'm delighted with the the leader's proposal to withdraw that CAF restructure proposal. But there's too many areas of concern for me to feel fully confident in endorsing this in in its entirety. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thanks for those comments, councillor Francis. Very good as always. I've got noted your, your raising of your hand, councillor Robertson. Thank you. And the recommendation that you that you mentioned was simply to update. And the increase was made at the two thousand twenty two, twenty three annual meeting. And that was following an independent remuneration panel report. So it's, it's, it's antecedent history is noted, just for the minutes, that's all. Councillor Huntley?
Thank you, Mister May. And I would just like to talk about a couple of things. Councillor Francis, when you talked about declarations of interest, that was something that I took up with our legal department and was advised that we don't need to declare any declarations this evening, so there is nothing for us to declare in that manner. And councillor Thompson, you completely missed the point that councillor Dixon was saying that this came about because a result of the boundary commission, they hadn't came back at the point when we discussed the CAF changes. Then when that become apparent, that we would actually be in a position of changing it all again, possibly in two years' time, we took the decision as a group to actually come back to council and say, you know, maybe it's not the right time to do it. So it's a bit disingenuous that you actually peel that one thing out when actually you could have yourself as an opposition member, could have put something to the boundary commission, and yet nobody else stayed apart from the Labour Group. And that's why we're in a position to maintain fifty four councillors come the twenty twenty six, twenty sixteen, sorry, elections.
Councillor Huntley, please don't tell me off like that. Oh, God. Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. First of all, Mister Mayor, in the in the paperwork, it's page twenty five of the report. It says the mayor, the the mayor, the leader and the committee chairs have an overriding discretion to extend speaking limits and make other adjustments on requests to enable everyone to contribute at council and committee meetings. And I'm only quoting that because I'm gonna do me best. I'm not gonna read the mag and the card out of you. But I'm gonna do me best with each time I get on my feet. Right, so in relation to the paperwork for the constitution, et cetera, the section on motions, where is I gonna adjust it? I'm not gonna bore yous with it. The the red writing's there, if anyone's looking at it now, or whoever's looked at it before. The red writing is obviously the changes that is I hoping to make in relation to the motions. All it's doing is silencing the opposition, moving the jumpers all the time to the point where is it out of order, illegal, defamatory, irregular, improper? That was already in. Now we're adding in vexatious and frivolous. Then we're adding in prejudice and other established constitutional processes. At the minute now, we're at the point where we'll be told, any opposition will be told. Labour groups looking at it, it's already moving, it's this, that and that. A motion's finished in this council now, right? It's finished. Extraordinary meetings, yous have got the red writing there, what is I gonna do? Again, the jumpers has moved again now. Bring back Ian Malcolm, you only moved a jumper a little bit. Yous are moving the jumper down there. Right, so to the point where extraordinary meetings, if it's in in some other respect, considered to be out of order, illegal, irregular or improper. Well, anything that upsets the Labour Group is improper. So there now, we've had the motions took away from the opposition and we've had the extraordinary meetings took away from the opposition. The only thing left for the opposition and screamers like me is social media, and that's what we'll rely on. So that's that.
Point of order? Is it point of order?
No, it's not a point of order. I just wanted to speak if I could.
No.
No, thank you.
So again, you've just mentioned there, Mister Mayor, about the remuneration panel. Why did we have a remuneration panel come in last year? Was it just a one off visit that is gonna do it for two, three, four year? Right, I don't know the answer to this, but what I don't like is this is titled, and this is about changes to the constitution, but slotted in there and one paragraph is, oh, by the way, the Labour, sorry, the councillors are gonna get four point no four percent. The SRA is gonna go up four point no four percent. Yeah. How's it changes to the constitution when it's about councillors allowances? Councillors allowances, the rises was never ever quoted in the constitution. It was stated in the constitution what the annual amount was. It was never slotted and sneaked in there what the rise was. We should be having a separate agenda, speaking about councillors allowances going up and SRAs going up. It shouldn't be slotted in it, paragraph number four hundred and eighty five. Yeah, I think it's totally underhand the way it's been slotted in there, and I disagree with it, and I oppose it.
Is there much more, councillor Robertson? Yeah. Yeah. Could I give you, I've just took some legal advice. Could I give you some the the legal process that must be placed at least every four years? And that's regarding the members allowance scheme, and that's included in the constitution. It's a legal process.
With respect, I get that, but who picks out the percentage figures? Who's, who's, who says four percent's okay?
The independent remuneration panel.
Last year. Right, thank you. So further on to the paperwork for this meeting, at page twenty two, paragraph ninety three, the SRA payable to the police and crime panel to be reduced from five thousand one hundred and two to two thousand five hundred and fifty six. That's great. That's a great reduction. But what I'd like to know is, and I've mentioned this before at meetings, why are we paying, even with that reduction, we're paying five times more to our member on the police and crime panel than what Newcastle City Council do? It's four hundred and sixty pound for the Newcastle City Council on that same committee. And we're paying five times as much, this extravagant council. Again, page four hundred and twelve of the new proposed constitution, down the side there, it's saying that this proposed fund, can you ask them to stop mumbling when I'm talking, please, Mister Mayor? Well, I can, and it's very, you know, interrupting. So this is the special responsibility allowances, page four one two of the proposed constitution. And the only one that hasn't got a fee is the vice chair of the community area forums. Now, I'm not sure I know what's been said tonight. Is that gonna be happening or is it not?
Well, we're not in a position anyway, but John.
I need to go through this, Mister Mayor. It's the biggest meeting of the year.
Yeah.
You're shutting us down after two minutes, not even giving us any extra.
No, I've given you longer than that.
Right, so can I ask that question for an answer now, please? Because I need to move myself on this. Is the vice chair of the community area forums getting a SRA now? Right, so my finishing comment on that is, if a vice chair for the for the community area forums can have their salary removed, and we're not removing their salary for every committee, that's the end of that one. So the co-op is allowance. Again, we're going for five thousand for the chair of the standards committee, the independent chair, and we're paying eight hundred and thirty one for the other independent people. There's no, there's no great difference in four times the payment. Then we'll move on to page one four six.
Councillor Robertson, can I just make a suggestion? Could you, you know, you're well, well over the time limit, all right? And people are alone. I've, I've give you leave here. Your questions, can you?
They're not questions.
Well, they are.
There was one question about the vice chair.
Questions and your comments. Address them to the leader of the council.
Well, what's the point in putting all this in for the for the meeting if we can't talk about it?
Well, we are discussing it.
Well, can I have two more minutes, please, if you don't mind, for the camera and then we're in your new role, and I've been polite. Two more minutes, please.
Mark can't allow it, sorry. If I allow that, if I allow, if I allow that to you and allow it to everybody else, so I'm, I'm sorry, rules are rules.
I'm the leader of the-
You're well, well, well over the time limit. I'm sorry.
Mister Mayor, if we sit, sit down tomorrow and look at the meeting, we'll see how long I was on exactly, and I haven't even got, you know, I'm trying to make the way of it.
I'm going off my time.
Very disappointed.
Thank you. Thanks very much, councillor Robertson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I think some of the points that had been mentioned when the leader read out what was said. And I think, you know, we are a democratic council and we truly believe in inclusivity. And we do have opposition members that sat on the Constitution Committee. And I take on board some of the points that have been made, but giving it due dis- Thinking about it logically, I'm sure every elected member within this chamber would agree. It would be pointless changing the CAFs, you know, from going from five to four, when we are going to be undertaking a process with with the boundary changes. Now, that's been going on for a while, but we've only just had notification of that. So I think it was justly unfair of, I can't remember which opposite of the opposition member it was now, that stated, you know, they knew nothing about it because the opposition do have, for the benefit of the cameras, councillor Robertson, for the benefit of the cameras, opposition members have positions on all of the committees. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Councillor, no, councillor, councillor Kilgore?
Thanks, Mister Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment. I wish you well in your forthcoming year. Mister Mayor, I'd just like to point out that as a member of Constitution Committee, we took an inordinate amount of time and and an actual, you know, an important amount of time to discuss the changes that have been proposed here and the amendments also that the leader has put forward, which I fully support. It is disingenuous, as councillor Huntley says, in that the proportion of Labour members on that committee is proportionate to the proportion of members in this chamber and the the political party or persuasion to which they represent. And I would also like to make it clear, and I have done previously, that there was also a suggestion that actually we were underpaid, and that did not come from Labour Group. We need to very much look at this. What we also did look in the round was the allowances from members of other councils and how that compared. The monitoring officer facilitated us in doing that by providing the data far and wide. And with regards to the CAF restructure, we looked at it well before. Mister Mayor, I'm very aware that this coughing malarkey is only when I speak, and I won't tolerate it today or any other day. It is vexatious and probably also disingenuous, which is another item I'd like to come on to. I think vexatious is a really good word to put in there. I think it's really appropriate and it's demonstrated more often than not. I'd like to give you a cough sweep, councillor Robertson, but I'm too far away from you. I think we very much need to support this, and I think we need not take away from the event that is your mayoral kind of evening. And I would like to try and close down this debate with the debate that's been had, and if so wished, then it's to be a vote. Then there needs to be a vote. Thank you.
Speaker on. Councillor Thompson, you've already spoken on this. Yeah, no more. Councillor Thompson.
It's a point of information.
It's a point of information, right? What's your point of information?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. And it's, I'd just like to correct an inaccuracy in councillor councillor Huntley's words when she spoke. She mentioned that I was disingenuous for pulling out one thing in criticism of the Labour Group's position on pulling the CAF restructure. I can ream off a few things if you want, but it was certainly more than one. You know, I mentioned the general lack of due diligence. I mentioned-
What is your point of information?
This is the point.
Right.
That there's more than one point. There was no supporting evidence provided, no data available, no consult, consultation with our communities made. So I didn't just pluck one thing out, councillor Huntley, so stand corrected, please. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Thompson. Thank you very, thank you very much. Now, we're gonna, I'm gonna make progress now. Uh, colleagues, can I remind you that the recommendation to reduce the number of CAFs to four has not been moved? I know there's the specific time that councillor Dixon mentioned for the six P M evening meetings. So with that in mind, is the report noted and are all the recommendations agreed? The recommendations are agreed and the constitution is updated accordingly. Thank you, colleagues. Yeah. Yeah, have you got five? Yeah. Okay. More work for the Democratic Services, but this is a democracy, so we'll go ahead with your request. Name vote, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Elected members, I'll read out each of your names alphabetically, and I would ask that you please indicate clearly using the microphone as to whether you are for, against, or abstaining from this vote. Councillor Bell?
For.
Councillor Barclay?
For.
Councillor Best?
For.
Councillor Brennan?
Against.
Councillor Bristow? Councillor Carter?
For.
Councillor Clare?
For.
Councillor Cunningham? Councillor Dawes? Councillor P Dean?
For.
Councillor Estine?
For.
Councillor Dixon? Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Ellison?
For.
Councillor Ford?
Abstain.
Councillor Francis? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Guy?
Against.
Councillor Hay?
For.
Councillor Herbert? Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy?
Against.
Councillor Kilgawa?
For.
Councillor Lamont?
For.
Councillor Lisk? Councillor K Maxwell?
For.
Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor McHugh? Councillor McKeon? Councillor Mellon?
For.
Councillor Milburn? Councillor Mill?
Against.
Councillor Peacock?
For.
Councillor Porthouse? Councillor Potts? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Purvis? Councillor Roberts? Councillor Robertson? Councillor Smith? Councillor Stonehouse?
Against.
Councillor Strick? Councillor Taylor?
For.
Councillor Thompson?
Against.
Councillor Traynor? Councillor A Walsh? Councillor M Walsh? Councillor Welsh? And councillor Yeh?
Against.
Yeah. Okay, colleagues, the recommendations are agreed and the constitution is updated accordingly. And that name vote was 35 for, 12 against and three abstentions. We'll move on to the next item of business. Before I move to the membership of the committees of the council, I'll ask the leader of the council to advise members on the composition and constitution of her cabinet and advise us as to her appointment of deputy leader councillor Huntley. The leader will read out the names of her deputy leader and cabinet members and their portfolios. Thank you councillor Dixon.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. As we all know, a leader is nothing without the right team and I'm grateful for the support of mine over the past year. Joan Atkinson and Anne Heatherington have been an integral part of my previous cabinets. Joan has supported me in the role as leader for over two years whilst leading the portfolio for culture, leisure and visitor economy. Joan always ensured when given the opportunity to champion South Tyneside, not only locally but regionally as well as nationally. This resulted in South Tyneside being recognised as a priority place by Arts Council England, benefiting from enhanced investment in culture. Talking about opportunities, following the announcement last year from the Sunday Times highlighting South Tyneside having the best beach in the UK, Joan made sure everyone was aware of that. Anne Heatherington was a superb lead member, driving our adults and health portfolio, ensuring our residents got nothing but the very best from the services we provided to them. I would like to express my sincere thanks and gratitude to them both. During the past 12 months, the cabinet has worked tirelessly to oversee a diverse range of decisions and activities, including overseeing and coordinating an extensive consultation with residents, partners, elected members and employees, and presenting to Borough Council for Agreement a refreshed 20-year vision and three-year strategy in November last year. I've reflected on what our council and our borough needs to really focus and support our vision and underpinning core ambitions, the things we all agree that we really truly want to see for our people of South Tyneside. We want them to be financially secure, healthy and well, connected to jobs, part of strong communities and how we can target support to those residents and parts of our borough that need it the most, reducing inequalities and making things fairer. Therefore, I've identified a number of changes to my cabinet team, who I know will deliver nothing but the very best for our people, the communities and the businesses of South Tyneside. Mr Mayor, it is with great pleasure that I can confirm that I've appointed nine colleagues to the following cabinet positions. Councillor Huntley will be my deputy leader with the portfolio for culture, leisure and visitor economy. Councillor Ellison will continue in the statutory role of lead member for children's services, but with a refocused portfolio of children's social care and families. Councillor Barclay will continue on my cabinet, but as lead member for adults, health and independence. Councillor Joanne Bell will continue as lead member for governance, finance and corporate services. Councillor Ernest Gibson will continue as lead member for an adjusted portfolio of neighbourhoods and climate change, whilst councillor Margaret Melling will take her position as lead member for economic growth and transport. And councillor Formal will act as lead member for housing and community safety. Councillor Paul Dean is appointed lead member for the voluntary sector partnerships and equalities. And councillor Jane Carter will take a new portfolio lead as the lead member for education and skills. I have great faith in the team of councillors who make up my cabinet, who have the experience, knowledge and the passion to lead this council with me and deliver our ambitions for our residents and our communities. Mr Mayor, these changes to the cabinet will need to be reflected in the constitution to ensure accountability and transparency and I will ask the director of governance and corporate affairs to make the necessary arrangements. Finally, Mr Mayor, I just want to update colleagues that I will continue to appoint members champions, elected members who will act as advocates for, put my teeth in, for specific areas for the council's business. The main responsibility of each member champion is to encourage communication and positive action over the issue they represent. They are as follows. Equality, inclusion, diversity and LGBTQ plus councillor Shane Smith. Skills councillor Judith Taylor. Youth engagement councillor Ken Dawes. Democracy councillor Anne Best. Domestic violence councillor Pat Hay. And town centres and villages councillor Mark Walsh. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks for that councillor Dixon. This item is for full council to recognise details from the leader of the council on her appointment of, the appointments to the cabinet and deputy leader. It's not open for discussion and therefore I suggest no questions or comments are taken in this regard. Thank you councillor Dixon. What is your point of order councillor? Point of order?
Two, two things, Mr Mayor. The one that you've just said's come to the front, when you've said it's not open to discussion, how can that be right at full council that it's not open to discussion?
Because it's, it's only a courtesy that the leader of the council comes and it's also under council procedure rule 117, which states that the annual council must be informed by the leader of the composition and constitution of the cabinet for the coming year and she has to give us the names of the councillors in her cabinet, chosen to be members of the cabinet. And that's, that's it. It's not open for discussion, it's just an information item.
Thank you. My second point, point of information, and this is a serious one and it is relating to the constitution and it needs taught about what councillor Huntley said before and what councillor Francis said before. We've all got these documents in front of us now, right, Martin Officer? We've all got these documents. Everybody in this room knows in the next half an hour, who is gonna be put in a position where they're financially rewarded, whether it's the chair of the committee, vice chair of the committee, cabinet member, your names are on here, you've seen them and you know that there's gonna be a vote and a discussion taken.
No.
Mr Mayor, I need to quote the constitution now please. It's 184, it clearly, you know, I've not even.
Councillor, 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 please sit down now, I'll just explain something to you. Right? I've already stated to you and on the full council, on the cameras et cetera, et cetera, that this is by courtesy. She doesn't, you know, I'm saying she, the leader of the council doesn't have to do anything other than give us the information. Yeah? Yeah? It's not a point of order. That's, no, you're not, no, it's not going ahead.
Mr Mayor, people cannot stay in this room when they've got to declare an interest. Our constitution says it, it's there for you. Martin Officer, will you have a look at it please? One paragraph.
No.
It's not a disclosure of pecuniary interest.
Councillor.
You've got to declare the interest and leave the room. Everyone of you that's named that document, it's in my constitution. If yous don't do it tonight, I've said it on camera to yous, yous are not, it's not a disclosure of pecuniary interest. Yous have got a financial interest.
Councillor. Councillor.
I have.
Right. Councillor.
What's that? I haven't voted on it.
Councillor, sit down.
I haven't voted on it, it's coming now.
Councillor Robertson, sit down please, right? I am, I'm not gonna tolerate that kind of behaviour, all right? I'm not gonna tolerate it. I'm trying to be respectful to you and I'm trying to be respectful to all, all colleagues. I'm trying to point out to you that that's information, or information, it's not funny thing, you're trying to raise a point of order and this is for all colleagues in here tonight that I'm saying this. If you're gonna raise a point of order, give the specific chapter, verse, not it's a point of order, then talk about something else. That's something completely different.
You've just stopped me doing that.
A point of order is a point of order, but I'm explaining to you councillor Robertson and everybody else. Councillor Robertson, right, I'm gonna give you a, a, a warning from the chair now. Please desist from, you know, doing what you're doing, your behaviour is not acceptable. Okay? I'm gonna move on.
A point of information, Mr Mayor.
Let's, let's, moving on now councillor Thompson.
You're refusing a point of information.
Councillor Thompson, I'm not going to say it again. Item 10 is to appoint the membership of the committees of the council. The next item of business is to consider the membership of the committees of the council for 2023, 2024. As indicated in the printed list circulated to members on gold paper which meets political balance requirements. Councillor Kilgore, are you going to move these appointments?
I am, Mr Mayor, thank you. So as you've just said, I move that the membership of the committees for 23, 24 be as indicated in the gold paper circulated to members this afternoon, which meets political balance requirements. Thank you.
Is that motion seconded? Thank you councillor Walsh. Are there any alternative nominations?
Have a, have a name vote?
Is the information included in the report noted and are those appointments as set out in the gold papers agreed? Thank you. Item 11, to appoint the chair and vice chair of the committees of the council. The next business is the appointment of chairs and vice chairs of the committees for 2023, 2024, as indicated in the printed list circulated to members on the green papers. I will ask councillor Kilgore to move the appointments. Councillor Kilgore?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move that the chairs and vice chairs of the committees for 23, 24 be as indicated in the green papers circulated to members this afternoon. Thank you.
Is that seconded? Thanks councillor Walsh. Are there any alternative nominations? Are those appointments as set out in the green papers agreed?
I'm having a name vote on this.
The appointments are agreed. Item 12, to appoint representatives to serve on outside bodies for 2022, 2023. And that is wrong, it should be 2023, 2024. Now, that's set out in the yellow papers, I'm gonna ask councillor Kilgore to move the motion, councillor Kilgore.
Yes. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move that the appointment of representatives be indicated on the yellow papers circulated to members this afternoon. Thank you.
The appointments are agreed. Item 13, to approve a programme of ordinary meetings of the council and committees. So the next business is to agree the programme of ordinary meetings as indicated on the blue papers. Councillor Kilgore?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. As this council knows, there has been an amendment with regards to the CAF schemes. So, Mr Mayor, I move that the meetings of the council and committees as indicated on the programme of ordinary meetings circulated to members this afternoon on the blue papers, which stipulate CAFs as they are, be approved. Thank you.
Is that seconded? Thank you very much councillor Walsh. Does any member wish to speak on this matter or propose an amendment? No? Is the programme of ordinary meetings as shown on the blue papers agreed? Okay, the programme of meetings is agreed. Item 14 is conclusion of business. I would like to thank everybody for putting the, the, the faith and trust in me and I hope that going forward, we don't encounter any bad behaviour and I'm sure that all my colleagues would agree with that. The business of the council is the important thing. We have to remember that we're here for one specific purpose and one specific purpose only and that's not to show board, you know, become like the House of Commons, it's to show some measure of responsibility and professionalism to move our residents' lives to a better place and our communities into a better place. Now, it's a, a, a different end to, to tonight that will be happening, which is unusual, it happens once a year when the mayor's made. But I could, could I take this opportunity to invite members and officers for refreshments in the reception room? And there is a little change in the procedure this year. Will I mention that or not? No? Well. There, there is a slight change to the refreshments, so I'll leave it at that. Could I now conclude the, the meeting? I'll make it 7:36? 7:36 and.